...meeting core, 7:03 PM. This is the regular meeting of the Township of Washington. In accordance with the requirements of New Jersey statutes regarding open public meetings, notice that this meeting was legally advertised in the Courier-Post and South Jersey Times and posted on calls important to municipal building. Fire exits are located through the double doors on your left and right. Please silence all mobile devices. This meeting is being videotaped. Anyone who does not wish to be seen on television may be excused. This will be shown on Comcast Channel 9 every week, Sunday at 9:00 PM, Wednesday at 7:00 PM, Friday at 10:00 PM, and Saturday at 10:00 PM. It will continue until the next meeting. This meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube. It can be found at WT-TV Productions under Live or on the agenda, which is on the Township's official website. Please rise for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance is implied by the United States of America and the Free Republic of Puerto Spans, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Roll call?
Mr. Delapio?
Here.
Mr. DeBorrello?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Yerkes?
President.
Mayor Gadsdenelli?
Here.
Mrs. Backage?
Here.
Mr. Platt?
Here.
Just want to let everybody know of a change. We're going to remove the executive session from tonight's agenda as it is not needed. We're going to move on to our presentations. First, we'd like to recognize the family of Steve Chares, the ice cream man serving Washington Township for over forty years. Let's family feast them up.
So this evening, we wanted to present to Steve's family. I'm sure most of you that have lived in the town for many, many, many years, you know exactly who we're speaking of. Steve with the yellow ice cream truck, right? You know who he is. For forty-plus years, he was at every game. He was at every event. He came out to represent the town, the children, the families. He was there for everything. Unfortunately, we lost Steve about a month and a half, two months ago. And we wanted to make sure that we represented him here in Washington Township and presented a plaque to his family in recognition of his past commitment and dedication while serving Washington Township for over forty years. This today is for you, and we greatly appreciate everything that Dad and your husband has done and helped within the community itself. So we have this plaque. It wouldn't be appropriate without having that ice cream truck on there, right? So we wanted to do this in his memory and present that to you this evening. So with that being said, I'm just going to show it to folks. This is the plaque that we're presenting out here. It does have the ice cream truck on there. We want to thank you for everything that Dad has done and the legacy he has left with you and the family. And I hope the yellow truck goes to a good party, right? Right? We got to do that. But this is for you this evening. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Never be forgotten. You may never be forgotten. Listen, you'll never be forgotten. Everybody, most being resident in town.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Next, we want to present proclamations to Sheila Middleton for National Library Week.
Alay Sheila and also the other library members. Have them come up too. All right. So this week is National Library Week, so we wanted to prepare a proclamation for Sheila and the library. So whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, showing them to live their best life. Libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socio-economic status. Libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity and access for all. Libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collection services and partnerships. Libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. Libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. Whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information ideas for all. Libraries, libraries, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, be proclaimed the mayor and township council of the Township of Washington to hereby recognize National Library Week, April 23rd through the 29th, 2023. During this week, we encourage all residents to visit their library to explore the wealth of resources available. And this evening, I am presenting this to you, Sheila. Thank you so much. She is our director of the library, Washington Township. We just want to recognize you and everyone here, the dedication that they put to the library and all the events and activities. And it's not just about library itself, about the learning. It's about the books. It's about just creating a place where kids can come in and just be creative for themselves. Find what interests them. There's so much more to it. Do you have a few words?
I just want to mention that we are working on our strategic plan, so we're looking for people to complete our survey, which is on our website. And we'll be here for a little while to hand out the survey and the QR code to scan it. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Next, we'd like to recognize Frank Denote and the Knights of Columbus for their charitable work throughout the community. Come on up, guys. Everyone come up.
All right. So this evening, we are presenting this proclamation, recognition of the Knights of Columbus. Whereas the Knights of Columbus was established by Father Michael J. McGivney and officially chartered by the Connecticut State Legislature in 1882. The Knights of Columbus was founded on the principles of charity, unity, and fraternity, with a mission to bring financial aid and assistance to sick, disabled, and disadvantaged members and their families. The organization has grown to over two million members. Sancta Familia Council Number 11498 in Washington Township was established in 1971 and proudly boasts over 150 members. The local council has pledged local support to Codes for Kids, Food for Families, and Special Olympics, in addition to the Washington Township Fire Department and Washington Township Police Department. Knights are present at many community events in Washington Lake Park, the Township Fourth of July Parade, and the Church of the Holy Family. Now therefore, be proclaimed the mayor and township council of the Township of Washington to hereby recognize worthy Grand Knight Frank Denote and the Knights of Columbus. Proclaim this 26th day of April, 2023. I present this to you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor Gadsdenelli. And on behalf of the Sancta Familia Council, I want to thank you and council for recognition of all our work. We are a volunteer organization. Last year, I think we recorded 21, over 2,100 hours of voluntary service from our members. So we're proud of that. And we're happy to do what we do. And, you know, I, our council itself, want to thank you and council for this great honor tonight. So thank you. God bless you all.
Guys, there's a middle aisle, right down here. I'm a picture guy. Move down, move down. Come on, move down. Move down, move down, move down. Come on, guys. Come on over. He's coming over. There we go. Get up there, man.
Next, we'd like to recognize our Employee of the Month for March and for April. Month of March is presented to Officer Alyssa Arnold. And for the month of April is presented to Officer Matthew Hendrickson. Can you both please come up?
Thank you, Mayor and council, for recognizing these two fine officers tonight. That's truly an honor. So thank you. Back in February, one of the coldest nights of the year, our officers responded to the reportedly missing juvenile, fourteen years old. It turned into a full search and rescue after eleven hours. Officer Alyssa Arnold and Officer Matt Hendrickson wanted a foot search behind the Starbucks that meets up to our Washington Township High School and found the unconscious juvenile in the wooded area behind the school area. And were able to bring him safely to the emergency room, where he made a full recovery. So thank you. These two officers are two of our finest on the force. They make Washington Township proud every day. Thank you, Matt.
May I have their families come up?
That situation led to us working on something at Assembly, so Assembly Moriarty. And he still gives updates on what they've been working on.
Thank you very much. Honored to be here tonight to speak to the mayor, council, president, council, Adam Clark, business administrator. Thank you for having me here. That last incident had to do with ingestion of a product that appears to be candy. These products are sold in many convenience stores. They often have the same names as candies. They have names like Zombie Skittles. And it looks just like the Skittles that you would buy for candy. Or another one I saw is Cannaburst Gummy Sours. But the problem is that these products contain trace amounts of THC, which is the substance in marijuana that gives you a high. Why are these in stores? Well, it's complicated. Back in 2018, in an omnibus farm bill that was passed in Washington, which they do every so often, it's actually up for renewal this year. The farm bill sought to control the sale and interstate sale and distribution of hemp-based products. And it declared that you couldn't sell these products that had, it was called Delta 9, which had 0.3% THC. Because that is the full-scale marijuana that gives you the so-called marijuana high. But what happened was chemists got together and started developing something called Delta 8, which has about 50% of the THC in it, and putting it in these candy-like products. There's no law on it. It's a loophole in the federal law. And so there's no regulation in our state as well. So I didn't know about this trend. And that's why I thank your local government for reaching out to me and the chief and saying, hey, this happened here. What can we do about this? And we have to do something about it emergently, really. So we have drafted a bill. It is, if anyone wants to go read it, it's kind of lengthy. It's Assembly Bill 5198. The prime sponsor is Dr. Herb Conaway, who's the chair of the Health Committee. I'm a prime sponsor as well. This bill would give the regulation of these products to the Cannabis Regulatory Commission, which would then oversee any sale, distribution, packaging, et cetera. They could dictate what the packaging could look like. They could make it so these could only be sold at dispensaries, where you had to be at a certain age to even go in and show ID and then keep records of who bought. So it would change this from selling them over the counter at these stores. It's very dangerous. And as I said, these are being marketed to children. No one is naming stuff Skittles and sour gummies to market to adults. So I talked to the chair of the Health Committee this afternoon. He assures me that this bill will have a full hearing, hopefully in May, if not June, but certainly no later than June. But he has talked with the head of the Cannabis Regulatory Commission, who is in favor of this. I put in a call today to the governor's office. We'll be speaking with them about this, how we can fast-track this. And also, almost all of these stores sell lottery tickets. I intend to talk to the head of the Lottery Commission and see if there's something they can do, whether there's prohibitions about which types of products can be sold in stores that sell the lottery. Think that they wouldn't want this type of a product that is marketed to children and could be very dangerous. Even though it only has half the THC, it's a low level. If you eat enough of these dummies and you're, you know, 12, 13, 14 years old, you're going to have effects. And it's very, very dangerous. And this is a trend we're seeing now, now that it's been brought to my attention. I'm reading up on it and seeing it happening all across the country. So I thank the mayor and council and the chief for reaching out. I just want you to know that we're on it. We'll keep you updated. We'll come back and let you know. I'll let the mayor know where we are. And the family that I talked to before the meeting here said they will come up and testify when we have this hearing, because it's so important to hear from the people that are affected, the children that are affected, and the families. So I thank you for your time. Thank you for all your good work. And have a great evening.
Thank Paul as well. I called him this afternoon to see if he had just a few minutes to pop by to be able to go over that information. So I thank you for your time. I know that you're busy. But it's real important that we get that out to the general public so that they understand that this is not something that we're sitting on. We're moving forward on that. And we are speaking with the right people to get it up to the state to have some regulations on this. So I wanted to thank him for coming out tonight. Thanks.
Next, I want to recognize the retirement of Mary Mickey Eвеч. She's been servicing her township for more than sixteen years. Unfortunately, Mary couldn't make it tonight, but I just wanted to recognize her. She does a great job in her Clark's office. She'll be sadly missed. She's been sitting next to Chrissy for nine years now. So just wanted to say, Mary, if you're listening, we're going to miss you. Wish you a lot of many years of retirement.
We're going to move on to the bill list. We're going to move on to approval of the bill list for April 26, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve the bill list for April 12, 2023?
Motion. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Yerkes?
Yes.
Mr. DeBorrello?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Delapio?
Yes.
We'll move on to the approval of the regular meeting minutes for April 12. Can I get a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for April 12, 2023?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Mr. Yerkes?
Yes.
Mr. DeBorrello?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Delapio?
Yes.
Move on to ordinances. Ordinance five is for introduction only. Ordinance adopting the amended redevelopment plan for the Delsey Drive redevelopment area in accordance with the requirements of the local redevelopment and housing law. Can I get a motion to introduce ordinance five?
Make that motion.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Yerkes?
Yes.
Mr. DeBorrello?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Delapio?
Yes.
Public hearing and adoption will take place on May 10, 2023. Moving on to ordinance six. Ordinance six is for introduction only. Ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limits to establish a cap bank for calendar year 2023. Can I get a motion to introduce ordinance six?
Motion. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Yerkes?
Yes.
Mr. DeBorrello?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Delapio?
Yes.
Public hearing and adoption will take place on May 10, 2023 for ordinance six. Moving on to ordinance seven. Ordinance seven is for introduction only. Ordinance of the Township of Washington, County of Gloucester, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter 178 of the Township Code entitled "Painful Flight." Can I get a motion to introduce ordinance seven?
Make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Yerkes?
Yes.
Mr. DeBorrello?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Delapio?
Yes.
Public hearing and adoption will take place on May 10, 2023 for ordinance seven. Moving on to resolutions. Following resolutions are by the set agenda only and require a vote for all listed. Each one must be read by title. If any member of the council wishes to have one removed and heard separately, they need to anticipate it prior to the reading of the titles. Does anyone need anything removed and read separately? Seeing none, we're going to continue. Resolution 118, resolution authorizing refund of tax overpayments. Resolution 119, resolution canceling taxes for totally disabled veteran located at 122 Shire Drive. Resolution 120, resolution awarding a bid to American Asphalt Company for 2022 road program Phase 3 project 08-18-T-424. Resolution 121, resolution accepting a maintenance bond. a maintenance bond from SDW Construction to 51 Tenant Road, Morganville, New Jersey, for covert improvements at 53 Orion Way. Resolution 122, resolution authorizing a change order from Paving Plus LLC for Washington Lake Park Pathway renovations. Resolution 123, resolution authorizing a change order, Lexiconcrete LLC for 2022 Road Program. Resolution 124, resolution of the mayor and committee of the Township of Washington questioning a six-month extension of time for award of a construction contract from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the FY 2021 Beltslake Road Improvements Phase Two Project. Resolution 125, resolution authorizing the purchase of firearms for use by the Washington Township Police Department through state contract with Whitmer Public Safety Group, Inc. Resolution 126, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute shared service agreement with County of Gloucester to provide family entertainment. Resolution 127, resolution for public art replacing Washington Lake Park in the Township of Washington. And Resolution 128, resolution appointing a member to the zoning board and updating the mayor's appointment book. Can I get a motion to approve Resolutions 118 to 128?
Make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Yerkes?
Yes.
Mr. DeBarello?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Delapia?
Yes. We'll move on to all business, new business, and reports.
Mr. Katsman Yerkes?
Thank you. The other Saturday, myself, the mayor, and we met at the Washington Lake Park. It was the community garden opening, where there are plots around there that different residents from the township will garden, grow things. Some of these items are donated to Mother's Cover, and it was nice to see that there's the possibility of it expanding, and that that's been works, so that additional residents, if they wish, maybe next year can grow, what is it, a 10-by-10 plot or something like that?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. And I wanted to reach out to our chief, our police department, and our fire department, and neighboring police departments. A couple of weekends ago, unfortunately, we had an unfortunate incident occur at the carnival, and I don't think we recognized our heroes enough. They met with a situation that they haven't seen before. I think we handled it expertly and excellently, and I want to give a big shout out to them for keeping everyone safe, and I hope that the officer who was injured is making a speedy recovery. And we want to let citizens here in Washington Township, throughout the county and the state, know that we back our law enforcement 100%. There's no backing down. There's no defunding of police in this town. We're not going to stand for this nonsense. So I want to give a big shout out to the council and the mayor. I know we all support you, the men and women of our police department. We thank you for being there, for tonight, when it's cold and when it's lonely out there. We appreciate you being there for us. So thank you, chief.
Thank you.
And thank all your members.
That's it.
Thank you.
Katsman Katsman Rob?
All right, well, listen, we're all here about the big softball game. You know, I don't know if everybody knows, the softball game was Saturday. We kind of all hobble up here, but we saw that. We're pretty injured, but we got pretty close. We got pretty close. The final score was 12 to 8, and then Monday, the girls' softball team dropped us off to us, as Ben Gay, as Advil, as Kyle O. We just took everything in our power not to use all this. They got the industrial sizes, because we did need it. We did injure most of the people here that have played, but man, it was awesome. I think everybody had a great time. Thank you so much to Reedus for the sponsorship on Hank Armor Road. Thank you to Jim Diorio from Mike, Subway, not Subway, I'm sorry, Jersey Mike's, from Jersey Mike's. He helped the girls also raise money, also helped ROTC. Thank you so much. The Knights of Columbus, and frankly, all of you guys, too. Honestly, it's an honor to have you guys with us tonight and all that you do, and all the proclamations tonight. What a just a great group to have. Nothing too much to talk about from the planning and zoning. Also, I want to give a shout out to Mickey. I mean, we work with Mickey every day. She's awesome. We're really going to miss her. She really brings a lot of light to the office and the Clark's office. It's really been a pleasure to work with her, and she'll definitely be missed. So that's all I have for tonight. Like I said, we're ready for next year's games. This is the first one. It's going to be an annual thing. We can all make it out, and we're, and at this meeting, we'll be using this stuff. So appreciate it. Thank you, Katsman Rob. Katsman Rob?
So yes, the game was a success. I think I better put it down for the year. I want to thank again Sheila and the staff of the library for the great work that they do. Honored to be a liaison and attend as many meetings as I can. It's been a pleasure to work with so far, and very receptive and open when I've been there. I want to remind everybody, again, Everbridge is up and running. We haven't really had anything to post yet, but we are prepared to send out messages when we have to. So on the front desk there, if there are information, feel free to take one. There's a QR code to sign up for your family and friends. It's also on the township webpage. And finally, Day, for those of you who don't know, is Administrative Assistance Day, so I want to give a shout out to the clerk's office and the staff who are late due for us on a daily basis. Appreciate all their hard work.
That's it. Thank you. Katsman Rob. Katsman Bennett?
A couple of things. First thing is I am working on a flag-leg program for Hillcrest and the W United Methodist Church in coordination with Rick S. So we will be placing flags on the graves of veterans from the 14th to the 24th, right after the mowing of the grass. And anybody who's interested, I already have my Boy Scouts coming out, and the council's going to come out, and if the Knights want to come out, I would appreciate it. We need to develop the 600 flags that we have to place on graves. I am a liaison to the Old Stone House, and we have our 15th Annual Car Show on this Saturday from 10 to 2, weather permitting. I hope everything works out great. The commission over there does a great job of doing the show, and the show involves people's cars. They're also showing artists of the area. So we'd like people to come out and support the Old Stone House. This is a fundraiser to help improve the buildings over at the Old Stone House Village. So do come out on Saturday, and we would really appreciate it. That's it for me.
Is there a search for Randy?
I do not know. As of now, I tried to reach out to Nick, and I haven't got anything. I don't want to say a real appreciation of Nick, I have to say, who takes care of the car show. Great job.
Thank you.
But if there is a weather thing, we can get it out on Everbridge.
Okay. Thank you. Who's the package?
Not yet, this time.
Stuart, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate the captain in Del Maral. He was our captain clutch in the game on Saturday, and Captain Button is a extraordinary shortstop. So we had a great time. It was a good event, and I want to thank everybody for coming out, and those who were thanking the captain present.
What about my pitching?
You hit eight good balls.
I wasn't worked on yet.
Did you call me Captain Lock or Captain Clutch? I wasn't sure.
I'll say clutch is this one.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Just a few things. Just as a reminder, we have our annual Battle of the Badges on May 2nd, so if you have not signed up to donate blood, please do so. We could use more help with that. We want to reach a goal of 154. Right now, we have 86, and we have another 68 to go. So if you can, please come out and register for that. It's greatly appreciated. Keep in mind that each donation can help up to three people. So it's very important that we get out there and come out for some fun. You know, Battle of the Badges is between the police and fire departments, so as you are approaching for the donation, you get to choose which team you would like that donation to go to. And then at the end of the night, everything is tallied up. There is a plaque and writing right. So it's a great time, and you can help a lot of folks with this. Also, we have Super Saturday coming up, May 13th, so if you're available, come on out. Great representation in the town, as well as Memorial Day is right around the corner, so we will be having our service at 11:00 AM at Veterans Park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're back to Jack.
Yeah, sorry about that. Since I started keeping track of the fines we get from Omni, we've gone from $4,200 down to $3,700, and the notation from Omni was plastic bags. So please, for those of you out there, do not, do not, do not put plastic bags of any kind in recycling buckets. Keep the caps off the bottles. Do not have to take the labels off any jars or bottles, and pizza boxes do not go into the recycling bin. They are trash. But it's working. It's bred the word.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of course. I just want to say, I want to congratulate everybody who's recognized tonight. Mr. Chisares, the ice cream man, Sheila and the board, library, Mr. DeNoe and the Knights, Officer Arnold, Officer Hendrickson. This is one of the benefits of getting elected and getting set up here, to be a part of great things with great people. It's an honor to be a part of this, to see the things you guys do day to day. It's truly amazing, and you know, thank you for everything you guys do service-wise. John, welcome. Thank you.
One other thing, I recognize Max. We're coming out tonight with the Boy Scouts to learn about government or citizenship in the community. Thanks for coming, Max.
Back, I want to touch on what Jack said. It was Officer Chigalese who got hurt. Yeah, I think a lot of people take it for granted with these police officers. Put them in line every day. They go out. Chief, you run a great unit there. We're very thankful what you guys do, keeping our camp safe. Anything you need from us, obviously, you know, we're here for you. But Officer Chigalese, no, I can reach out to him and speak to him when he got hurt, let him know we're here for him, and hopefully he's feeling better and he can come back on the job soon. Also, we've had three businesses open over the last couple of weeks. We have Dolce Vita, which is a gelato place, which is across from Duffield, which has phenomenal gelato. A place called Hydrate IV, and Lemoncello Restaurant, which are both across from the high school. So shop local, visit your local places. Lemoncello is the old Pelican Fish Restaurant. All three of them are great small businesses, so please get a chance, visit them, try them out, you know, support them, support our local businesses. The primary election is coming up. It'll be held on Tuesday, June 6. Polls are open from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. You can only vote your party during this primary. The deadline to change party affiliation has passed. If you are a registered Republican, you can only vote for your Republican candidates. If you are registered as a Democrat, you can only vote for your Democrat candidates. There are a few deadlines to be aware of. May 16th is the last day to register to vote. May 30th is the deadline to apply for mail and ballot. The quickest way to register is to go in line to https://voter.sbrs nj.gov/register or Google Register to vote in New Jersey. You can stop in the Clark's office to obtain any voter forms, including the forms to register to vote or to change your address. There are also on the table, forms are also, can also be found on the township website under the Clark's office. The Dog Park is open. It is located at Cedar Lake Park. Stop by the Clark's office and purchase a permit. It costs $10 for the township residents and $20 for non-residents of the township. Going to move on to public participation. Please follow the public decorum posted, which has also been attached to the public agenda. Limit your comments to five minutes. Once you have completed your comments or questions, the council president will then ask any member of the governing body or their designated wishes to address your questions or comments. Can I get a motion to open to the public?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're open to the public, and I motion speak.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jaglanu Dorashel, a resident and a taxpayer of Washington Township, and a proud member of the Magic Club.
Thank you for your service.
My question is...
Sorry, is your mic on?
Michael, you on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My question is about the status of the R and D of the business administrator. Anybody?
I mean, it's ongoing process right now. They're still interviewing, and until, you know, they find somebody that they find happy with, and then that's when the decision.
That's the homos ear. You had the same answer, Daniel Larker, right? But Katsman Del Maral, who mentioned that you found a candidate. Is he the only one out of the five that is okay with that candidate?
It is. It's not. The mayor has to be comfortable. It's her appointment, so she has to find somebody that she can work with, and I don't know if you want to jump in, but it's...
May I ask the mayor directly?
Sure.
Captain Button, may I interrupt quickly? I just want to remind council...
I know, Mr. Mayor.
This is a certain no matter, and when I forgot one line, I think it's a she-making process. Describe the process. Basically, tonight, I need to sort out. I'm trying to figure out what's going on with the heart.
We can't hear him. What did he say?
It ain't cut out. I think we're not done.
Was that the mayor's meeting?
What?
Mr. Delapia?
I think what he was saying is that you can't go to specific specifics of the search.
I don't know if this is a specific question or not, but there was a gentleman that applied. Actually, his name is a supplement, Brandon Uma. If I look at his dossier, he matches all the qualities and requirements posted on the website of legal municipalities. So I was going to ask the mayor if she talked to this gentleman and why she did hire. Is that a question I could ask? Miss Mayor?
No, I can answer that.
Still in the by zone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, I served on council four years. Other than the luxury that you have right now, five members at council, all of the city party. But let me tell you what I learned about our public government. Since you have the majority and the supermajority plus one, you can add a line item on the budget. You can actually add a line item to hire a full-time, experienced business administrator. And then, of course, the majority can delete a line number, and you can delete the entrant. Sorry, you can do that. I will recommend to consider talking to a lawyer that is very familiar with your style of government against legal opinion or political opinion. If this cannot be done, the other thing I would recommend is that you can hire a temporary experienced, I guess, a DA that is very familiar with the municipal budget. The municipal budget is not going to protect any other budget. So by bringing in experience, because all five of you are fully new at this, three of you actually never worked for the municipal budget. The two of you have, but you were the majority. I would recommend very strongly to get a professional in charge of that. The other thing that I have is it has to do with the budget. But now we touched a little bit last week, or the rest I'm always here. And I've brought six budgets with me. And I brought six budgets with me, pretty, in case we had a question. But I understand that the budget is not on tonight. Maybe my question should be better to ask you another time.
As of right now, the budget is still being reviewed for the 2023 budget. So it's not only.
So it will, it will be more appropriate for me to ask you at that time?
It'd probably be more informational, I think, when the 2023 budget is presented.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody else want to speak?
Name is Jason Gonder, two four one one, Berwyn Court, Boise, New Jersey. First question is for Ms. Backage. Did you receive an email from me today?
I did receive an email from you today.
Okay. Do you plan on responding? Were you told not to respond to it?
I actually put it out and put it in as an Oprah request, and it was, it will be responded to. Probably, oh, an Oprah.
Is there a reason a township official just can't answer the questions about surplus taxpayer dollars?
I mean, ultimately, the information is available online, which we stated in your email. So really, the information is available to you.
Okay. I sent an email to you, Mayor, today. The email you received, we're going to have copies for everyone in council, which they will copy on. May I? I'll read you the email, then give you an opportunity to respond. Mayor Gatnelli, good afternoon. Can you please confirm that 2023 Washington Township initial budget will have a tax increase of five cents on the rate for taxpayers of Washington Township? How do you justify the increase? Do you have the budget pulled from the agenda and purposely forcing a delay in reporting this disappointing news to taxpayers and residents of Washington Township so it doesn't harness your 2023 campaign and primary for county commissioner? What value and/or additional services are you providing to Washington Township taxpayers and residents while increasing their property taxes in 2023? What steps have you taken or done to recover taxpayer money from Watson's Turkey private property acquisition years ago? Even with the tax increase, you supplemented the 2022 and 2023 Washington Township municipal budget with A R B, American Rescue Plan monies, generously allocating the spending of a large portion of those funds to your largest political campaign contributor, Remington and Vernick Engineers. Those funds will be available, those funds will not be available to supplement the 2024 Washington Township municipal budget. Should residents and taxpayers race for another increase in 2024? How much will be left in the municipal surplus after the budget? And how will this be reduced to impact the Moody's credit rating for Washington Township? What was your reasoning and rationale for not offering the business administrator position to the very qualified and accomplished Brandon Huber? Is this retaliation towards the Republican majority Washington Township Council on your behalf? I'll give you an opportunity to respond.
I just want to speak a little just to respond about the budget.
Sure.
As of right now, truly, there is no, they know introduced budget. So the, the five percent tax increase, ultimately, that's not, there's nothing in black and white because it really is being reviewed and worked on right now. So.
What's your budget issue for?
I'm not, I mean, I really don't want to say.
You don't want to say, you have taxpayers here. How could you not want to say?
Excuse me, may I, as a Councilman, I would like to recognize.
Yes, Stuart.
Yeah. Uh, the, under the protocol act, as you know, Councilman Black, the council knows, everybody knows, the mayor presented the budget, the council approved the budget, the budget has not been presented yet. So everything that's being discussed right now is, it is not appropriate. And it is all hearsay, and it's not, it's not been to the point where it's been presented. So there's really no need to react to any of these comments. Just be straight, whatever comments they want to make. But if the budget's not been presented, we're really chasing our agenda.
So Ms. Backage, was there a four-hour meeting where the solicitor or the mayor proposed using open space funds to balance the budget? Was that comment made by either one of them? Which is illegal.
Again, we don't have to answer any of these questions. There's so many here say the budget's not been presented, and when it's presented, and the real actual budget is presented, the council, there'd be a public hearing, and that would be a proper place to discuss it.
Ms. Backage, is it common practice in the past since you've been CFO to have the solicitor sit in on a budget meeting and offer ideas? Does he have any experience in accounting or background in finance? And do you know if he does that for his other townships?
The only thing that I can actually speak of in previous legislative.
But, 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 there's no need to respond. It's not a cross, and there's no need to, again, no need to engage. No budget's been presented. So it's really all hearsay. And it's only, we're not chasing false narrative.
Thank you, Stuart. Tell Donna I said hello. My question for council is, what do you think about the mayor not responding to any of these questions? What do you think about the mayor not responding? She gets asked these questions, she doesn't respond. I watched you, Mr. Del Perello. I had the last meeting respond to Mr. Jean Parlow. I think that's, I think that's your reputation, Stuart.
All right, guys, we're going to my meetings.
We're getting at, we're getting at things that have nothing to do with the township. Let's, let's get back to the business of the township.
Exactly.
Stuart! Stuart!
Yeah, let's, let's get back to the business of the township.
Stuart! I'm bringing the meeting back to order, please.
Thank you, Council President. Just again, some comments on behalf of you guys. You guys are on council. The mayor doesn't respond. It seems you guys beautifully articulate to comments.
So I'll answer the comments on, on, on both speakers.
Sure, thank you.
I think what you're experiencing here is something different than you've ever seen before from the council. We're going to answer, we're going to speak. We can only speak when, when we have the information. We don't have the information on the budget in front of us. So we really can't speak about that. To get back to the BA, you know, I'll go back to the comments I made before. I agree it's the most important job in this town, right? It's the most important board, school board, one of the most important jobs at the BA. This is very important. We have fifty thousand people that are relying on this person. If this person could help us with our budget, if this person could help us with other, other things that we need here in town. I strongly believe that, I go back to the same comments I made at the last meeting. I appreciate anybody who comes up and asks. I do feel like the town is hurting without having this. I do think it's something that we definitely need to do, and I think we need to, to do this quickly. We need to find the right candidate. I do believe you found the right candidate. I do believe in this person. I have seen their resume. I do know, I know their character, and that's really what we need. We don't need to play politics. You know, the one thing I said from the very first day was we can't represent ourselves as they are, or ours, or yous. Let's just identify as people. Let's do what's best for the town. And I believe this council has done that more than any other council. And I'm not putting any other council down, just speaking for, for us now. We're not playing politics. We just want the best people. I mean, before this, I was a venture capitalist. I was in private business. I want the best people to my company. You know, every team wants the best players. As we have here, we have amazing clerk's office. We have an amazing construction office. We have an amazing chief on both sides, a provider on the lease. So of course, I want that, that person to be just as good. I want that person to come in here and be able to, to work with the people here and move our town forward. You know, I mean, Council President spoke tonight about businesses that were openly, because Washington Township is a business. We want that. We want that. We have our library board here. We have the Knights of Columbus. So we want people to know the great things that are happening in our town. So I'll go back to those comments again. I want to find a BA. I want to find somebody who's qualified. I want to find somebody that can work with the team here. I do think it's important. I don't want to play politics. I truly believe that everything that we're doing as a council is not playing politics. I really believe that we're here for the right reasons. We're going to continue to be here for the right reasons. When everyone comes here, I don't care. I don't care what's the name of your name. I want you to be here because you want to be a part of this team. You know, that's what, what Saturday was all about. I think it was so much fun playing against those girls. It was just, it was something that really, we got to see each other in a different light, right? We got to see each other. We had to spend time with people. We don't usually see each other on an every single day basis, right? It was really a lot of fun. I want that against you. So to answer your questions again about the budget, we're not being quiet. We don't have any problems. That's, that's why I'm not answering. As far as the BA goes, I'm not going to change my, my stance. I want to find the right person. I want to find.
Did you, the, the individual who was mentioned tonight, you believe that was the right individual?
I do, yes.
Councilman Brown, you believe that was the right individual?
I do.
Councilman Bennett, the right individual, Brandon Huber, did you endorse him?
I did. I have not met him, not talked to him, so I cannot.
You would be voting for him, though. You didn't look at his resume? You didn't talk to your fellow councilmen?
Again, at this time, I'm not going to just make any statements.
Council President, did you endorse that individual?
I would have endorsed him, but I have not interviewed him. I have not, I've talked to him a few times. But, but as, as you know, it's not, not our decision. And so that's.
You do vote him in, though?
Yes, but it, as you, it's not our point. That's where I, I think the issue comes, comes.
And Councilman Yurkis, did you endorse that individual?
I only got the individual a little time, and it was not in regards to the BA position. I think he's a fine character. I think his accomplishments are very high. And I would vote for him if it was presented to me. But I would like the opportunity to sit down and interview any candidate who applies for the BA position, because we're finding out that you really need an extraordinarily intelligent individual. Someone who's well-rounded, someone who thinks math and numbers in their head, and is looking out for the community, and is a good business administrator. So I would welcome the opportunity to sit down with any candidate and just question them, get a feel for where they're coming from, where they want to go, what opportunities and ideas they have. Because we're all here for Washington Township and the Ford Prom. We're looking five, ten years down the line right now, no matter what it is.
Sure.
It's the health and safety of the community, with the new police, destruction building, maybe a possibly a newness of building. So we're looking at all that in the future. But I would have to agree with my fellow council members that if I was presented with that opportunity, I would say yes.
Are there, Council President, I'll direct the question to you, are there plans to incorporate the M U A underneath the umbrella of municipality to help?
There are no plans for that. Not yet.
Has there been any discussion or exploration of that? How come?
There hasn't been, or there isn't.
You don't think that that could help streamline services, bolster their surplus to help cover the budget deficit?
I didn't say that. I just said.
Do, do you think that's a possibility worth exploring, rather than raising taxes for residents?
I, until I see the budget, I really can't answer that honestly.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else who should speak?
Thank you, sir. Hi, good evening. My class B two Ridge Court, in Washington Township, ten years. I just want to thank the council for recognizing the two officers tonight. That was our son, my son that they found. Obviously, I don't want to explain the difference to me in our life. So I appreciate the council recognizing them tonight, of their efforts, because they individually found our son. I do want to point collectively, the police department as a whole, and the fire department, collectively checked areas and everyone, you know, checked dark areas that crossed off, off the list to eliminate. So collectively, everyone found, even though there's two officers individually found. I just want to say thank you to the chief, thank you to my battalion chief, Moore back there, who that up in the middle of the night. Any, any difference for us? So thank you. Going forward, Assemblyman talked about the issue that's affecting all of our kids, not just in the state, but on a state level. I didn't touch the mayor. That's now a chief person. And I put in contact for councils, been Councilman Chief. They've all been wonderful. They've been touched basically since the, since the incident, February. It's, it's very scary what's out there. Starting next week, I told Councilman Pete that I have people that I can meet with all you guys and give you the information I have about what's just in our town that's available for our kids. It's, it's truly scary. I do look forward to working with all you guys, including the Assemblyman, on a state level. Because that's where the entry laws have passed, you know, we can do ordinance and protests in town. But it has to be dealt with on a state level, law-wise. So you'll be hearing a lot from me. You have large support. My family is so grateful of the effort that Washington Township has put out, and I respect. So thank you very much.
How's your son feeling?
He's great. Like the chief said, fully covered. But we were close, though.
We're better if it worked out. We're here for anything you or your family should need.
I appreciate it. Again, thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Anybody else who should speak? Seeing none, can I get a motion to close? Smacking. All in favor?
Aye.
Next council meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May tenth, 2023, at seven PM. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.